Okay, why don't we start? Hopefully, Miriam will join us soon. I'm going to call the June 18th meeting of the City Commission to Order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Conway? Nielsen?
Here.
Salmon?
Here.
Dawson?
Here.
Greenberg? Maxwell? Chair Shiffrin?
Here. Yeah, I know that Commissioners Conway and Maxwell are not going to be here, are absent with notification. Are there any statements of disqualification? Are there any oral communications? Are there any announcements? Assume there's nobody from the public on the line? Is that correct?
That is correct.
It will now move to Presentations. Resilient Coast Santa Cruz Update. Welcome, Tiffany. Nice to see you. And just a staff report? Or we're just turning it over to you? Can't hear you.
Thank you for that. Hello, Commissioners. I will share my screen with you right now, and we will get started. Okay, I think you can see this. You can see my screen, yes?
Yes, yep.
Okay. Very good. Again, nice to see you this evening, Commissioners. I am Tiffany Weisbiss, the Sustainability and Climate Action Manager for the City of Santa Cruz, and I'm here to give you a quarterly update on the Resilient Coast Santa Cruz Initiative. I was last in front of your body regarding this topic in December of 2019, and we have made some progress since then. So, just to remind you very quickly that we are looking to develop a future, a vision for a resilient future coastline, addressing things like access, tourism and recreation, transportation, the need to maintain ecosystems, habitat and connectivity. We have existing coastal infrastructure and policies that need to be evaluated. We've projected that over a billion dollars in infrastructure and property alone is exposed and vulnerable by the end of the century, driving, one of the drivers of this project. And then, of course, we have our special sense of place and cultural identity here in Santa Cruz. And as I've emphasized in my times before you, we also are really trying to center equity in this project, trying to create this inclusive conversation for a community vision. And again, this is a, we're looking at both near-term, medium-term, and longer-term solutions. The time horizon on these projects is the end of the century. Obviously, more details in the nearer term. And again, looking for a really resilient and equitable coastline. This project, once again, or this initiative consists of two projects. The West Cliff Drive Adaptation and Management Plan funded by Caltrans. That's being led by Dr. David Revel from Integral. He is on the line also today. And then, our beaches project, which will result in a local coastal program update to integrate sea level rise policies and strategies to support beach and public access protection, is funded by the Coastal Commission and is being led by Ross Clark of Central Coast Wetlands Group. He's also on the line here. Just to remind you, we have a seventeen-person technical advisory committee, including Chair Shiffrin and others from the community and from other commissions. We have a multi-departmental city team working on this, and we've been working closely with State Parks, California Coastal Commission, the Boardwalk, in addition to many other groups that have been involved so far. Just to remind you of the geographic scope of this initiative, we really are looking at everything from Seabright Beach on over to natural bridges. So, that includes the cliffs, bluffs, beaches, and the developments backing them. Really, there's just a very small portion of the city that is, the city's coastline, that is not included in the scope of these projects. But hopefully, we will have a future project, potentially in collaboration with UC Santa Cruz. So, to date, just to recap, when I was in front of you in December, we were just finishing up the existing conditions and future vulnerability assessment for West Cliff Drive and some initial work on the beaches project. Since then, our consultants have completed adaptation strategies and pathway evaluations for the different stretches of the coastline. We've broken this up into the four beaches where we are lumping the pocket beaches of West Cliff together, and then four zones on West Cliff. So, we've evaluated these adaptation strategies and these pathways, which again are the short to longer-term strategies across these different sites within the scope of, the geographic scope of the project. We also have delivered, has been delivered, a socially vulnerable populations impact assessment, which I encourage you to take a look at. All of these deliverables are available at the city's website, cityofsantacruz.com/ResilientCoast. There's a document box on the left-hand side. I do want to point out that this socially vulnerable populations impact assessment is quite unique, and we're pretty proud of the direction this is going, in addition to the rest of the technical work on the project that, you know, a lot of folks are watching. And then, I think, as many of you know, we've been utilizing virtual reality to supplement the engagement on this initiative. So, just to share with you some snippets from each of those deliverables. But again, you can dive in more and more detail in the documents. This represents our West Cliff Drive, Zone Two, Elmar Avenue, and West Cliff Drive to Lighthouse Field State Beach. And what we're showing here are areas of high hazard, areas of high risk, areas of high hazard are C caves, undercuts, areas of extreme erosion. We're also showing the intersection of those two things, high risk and high hazard, as well as projecting out, if we did nothing at all, what the cliff erosion extent might look like in 2100. And we're showing coastal armory that has both ten years of life left and that that has longer life left. So, we have similar depictions for all the stretches on West Cliff and the beaches. Little different format. Our consultants have also prepared these tables to really guide us in looking at short to long-term adaptations of both the bluffs, the beaches, the cliffs, and the transportation network. This was developed through public input, and department had intact input in terms of selecting or identifying preferences for shorter and longer-term adaptations. We have not done any type of recommendations or anything like that at this point. And I will point out that the transportation adaptations are called out as in our grants with Caltrans, that we do need to look at these different scenarios of transportation adaptation. And then, of course, we need to look at the technical feasibility, the secondary impacts and so forth, as we continue to try to educate our residents and our decision-makers, and as we turn in very soon into narrowing in on the recommended strategies. Just to remind you all that we are utilizing this adaptation pathways approach due to the uncertainty of when we might experience these climate influence impacts on these coastal hazards, i.e. sea level rise, you know, the extent, when it's coming. We're using this adaptation pathways approach, which instead of saying, okay, in year 2040, we're going to build a seawall, or whatever the project is, instead, there's a physical trigger that signals to us, okay, it's time to initiate or transition to that next phase in the adaptation pathway. And that really helps us to prevent early investments, premature investments, or investments too late, and really tie those two physical triggers in most cases. And here's some examples of those triggers. And then, also, here is an example of what an adaptation pathway visualization can look like. In this case, Seabright Beach. I want to emphasize here that this is just an example, and you will find refined versions of these pathways for all the stretches, again, are posted at our website. So, if you start in the upper left-hand corner here, you see that the existing strategy is listed as revatment, and in this case, it's primarily riprap, I'd say patchy riprap. There also has been dune restoration on the beach, and sand is being retained by the Harbor's West Jedy. If you recall, I believe I might have said previously that the Seabright Beach is two-thirds greater in width than it was before that Harbor Jedy was installed. And so, you look on the far right-hand side, and you see the trigger. The trigger here is loss of protected certainty of dunes and cliff impacts by storm waves. Now, those will be quantitative at some point, so what does that exactly mean? Once the threshold, when that metric is defined, is passed, we would then transition into the next stage, or next phase of the strategy, which would be a living shoreline. So, in this case, it could potentially be a cobbled dune with some more native planting, potentially enhancing and expanding the existing dune that is there. Again, we're looking at the same kind of triggers, but cliff erosion is another. And when those thresholds are passed, we would look at some kind of retreat option, potentially one-way traffic with parking in a recreation trail, and then, at some point, continuing to potentially closing vehicle access. So, this kind of walks you through what the adaptation pathways really looks like. I've shown this slide before. It's been enhanced a bit. We've done extensive outreach. I do want to point out that we will be turning, if you look at the bottom row here, we will be turning towards our next public engagement in July, where we will be getting feedback on these different adaptation strategies for the different stretches from the public and our different stakeholder groups. We will be supplementing that with the Phase Two Virtual Reality, which is going to come out in a mobile phone app, and it has a couple visualizations of what some of these adaptations might look like. And then, we'll also be checking back with our underrepresented groups. And we have one more touch point with the community in the late fall that's scheduled as we turn into adopting these final deliverables. In terms of equity, you know, we have been spending time with our frontline community leaders, particularly the beach flats, designing meetings with them, conducting meetings down in the beach flat garden and park. We've really been leveraging academic partnerships. UCS, these Coastal Science and Policy Graduate Program has really brought capacity, as well as San Jose State University, who worked with us on the interviews in the beach flats. They have really brought capacity that we did not have to focus long-term on these frontline communities. And we're learning so much, some of which is really germane to this initiative, but other things that I think could inform other projects and other initiatives that the city is interested in and the community is interested in, in the beach flats. We've had one-on-one meetings with thirteen different historically underrepresented groups, LGBT folks, youth, elderly folks, people living with disabilities, people of color, and so forth. And with respect to health and all policies, which was the last time I was in front of you, I believe in January, we are doing things internal to the city that are really elevating equity that I think has the potential to improve our outcomes, not just on this project, but more broadly. And one of the things that has come out of the work so far is this graph, or this table, rather, where we took the feedback that we heard from historically underrepresented groups from the frontline communities and worked it into an assessment of overall level of service and access limitations. And that's been color-coded here, and that's really looking at things like, okay, is there access available? What about ADA access? What about gender-neutral bathrooms? And so forth. That's, you can find more about that in our documents at the website. So, now, our next set of deliverables, which we actually have just received for the beaches project, up to three sets of adaptation pathways, and we'll be getting a cost-benefit analysis here in the next couple of weeks for the different stretches of West Cliff Drive and adaptation pathways for all of the beaches. We also received some conceptual designs for some of the transportation adaptations. And as I mentioned, the virtual reality is going to be coming out in the next month or so. And so, we will be going to the community with some of this work, as I mentioned, in July. I'm not going to review all of this here, but I did want to share with you how the community outreach, how the TAC input and various data sources kind of fed into this project and where we are. And you can see, we're really turning into the home stretch here. You can see at the bottom of the page that we're working towards the adaptation pathway recommendations. We'll have this bit of input. And then, we will be developing the West Cliff Drive Adaptation and Management Plan that will take the form of a public works plan. We're working on, right now, what the SEQA analysis will look like for that public works plan and the LCP amendment with the sea level rise policies, specific both towards the beaches, but also pulling out policies from the West Cliff Drive project that will be integrated into that LCP amendment. And that is scheduled to, these documents are scheduled to be finished and adopted by city council by the end of the year, around the end of the year, perhaps January, and then go to the Coastal Commission for approval soon thereafter. And with that, I just want to thank you, and if you have any questions, and I provided the link again for the website where all the deliverables can be viewed at. So, I'm happy to take any questions that you might have or any comments.
Thank you very much, Tiffany. Do other Commissioners have any questions? Cindy?
Thank you so much for that presentation. I just had a couple of quick questions. So, the first one's regarding, you gave us an example of Seabright Beach and the triggers, the physical triggers that would take you from one pathway to the other. You also had an arrow in there and a dotted line that's had the transition zone. And so, when I was looking this and reviewing this, I know the intention isn't to be reactionary. Obviously, you have that transition period bit built in there. I was wondering if you could talk to me about, since you're waiting for a physical event to happen, what's the trigger for that transition from one pathway to the other? And kind of, how do you guys envision that working?
Yeah, the, I, like I said, this is the pathways from our consultants. I haven't had a chance to look at the revised version. This example that I gave you actually was extracted from the draft version that had been developed a bit ago. And as I said, the metrics will be assigned to that in terms of what the number value looks like. But it, the threshold that's selected gives us enough lead time for the planning also, for the planning and the implementation. So, that's something that we, you know, I'm expecting to see a little bit of discussion in these deliverables that we just received.
Okay. Let me see if I can ask it a little bit of a different way. I perhaps didn't actually get out what I was trying to ask. So, I think in the example that you gave, it was something like storm damage to back dunes or something like that was the trigger from one pathway to the other. So, that's a discrete event. But you also had this arrow that was saying, well, you know, we know this might be coming, so we may need to be improving the integrity of the dunes by cobbling in more native plants. So, I'm trying to understand how we know when we're transitioning from one to the other. There we go. So, that we're, so from where the black dot is to the red square, what triggers the black dot there? Because that's not the actual event, the loss of protection of the dunes, right? That's something else. So, what is the black dot there? I'm just trying to understand that part of this.
I do think it's a progressive loss of protective certainty of the dunes, and then, the cliff erosion itself, which would be, you know, a rate. As I said, I haven't seen the next version of this. If, you know, Ross is on the line, if he would like to chime in and provide a little further explanation, if he's able, I would welcome that, just to try to get you a little more clarity on that, Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you, Tiffany.
Sure.
You can hear me, right?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead, Ross. Hi.
We've tried to identify numeric triggers in the document we've submitted this week that are not, don't describe catastrophic events, but describe initial identification of impacts that gives us time to respond, either by shoring up existing infrastructure or doing the planning permitting and design needed to transition from one pathway or one strategy to the next. So, we're not looking for the failure to suggest a new action, which in some ways is what we call business as usual, and which we have been doing for a long time, is repairing or upgrading as things fail. And we want to get past that and be proactive.
Great, thank you. That was super helpful. And then, the other question I had for you, Tiffany, was you said that you spoke with underrepresented groups, and one of the categories was fishers. I was curious, is that commercial fishermen or recreational fishermen or both? Or what did that engagement look like? And that's it. Thanks.
Yeah, sure. We spoke with a representative of the, it's not commercial fishermen. We really were having a difficult time reaching commercial fishermen. But a representative, and I'm, the name, the name of the group is escaping me right now, but they represent about 600 fishermen in Santa Cruz area. And they are doing both river fishing and creek fishing, as well as coastal fishing. And so, it really only involved that one engagement for the fishers people. So, we are continuing to try to make connections to folks in the commercial fishing industry, but just have not been successful, so.
Great, thank you.
And I can get you that, yeah, I can get you that group name if you'd like to. It's not at my fingertips at this moment.
Sure, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, I'll follow up on that. Thank you.
Do other Commissioners have questions? Well, my lead wants to believe, since I'm on this task force, that I have all my questions answered already. But I think being on this task force has just led me to have more questions. So, I'm going to take some time and ask some questions. I don't have too many. I did look over the documents that were on the website. And on the West Cliff Adaptation Management Plan, the Tables 10-8, 10-9, which are really, seem to be the, from my perspective, the important tables in that project because they list the different projects, they have information about their upfront cost, their maintenance cost, their effectiveness certainty, secondary impacts, and lifespan. And I think that information is all potentially helpful. But it wasn't clear to me, the way the cost information was presented was three-dollar signs, two-dollar signs, one-dollar sign. And it isn't clear what those represent. You know, certainly, orders of magnitude, they are, you know, are clear. But is one-dollar sign 10,000, is three-dollar signs a million? It's just not, particularly since cost is going to be a major factor in terms of knowing what's going to be done, it seems important to have a sense of what the different, you know, what the different costs are.
Sure, so.
Do you have an answer to that? I think I might have asked that question before, and.
Yes, you did, you did. So, if you recall last time, we had the same answer, is that this was our first attempt to try to ascertain costs relative to other strategies, right? And as we had mentioned last time, this next deliverable contains a cost-benefit analysis, which will utilize some more specific cost estimates for the project. So, you will be seeing that very soon, Chair Shiffrin.
So, the chart, the next go-around with the charts will define what those dollar signs are talking about?
I have not seen exactly what that looks like yet, but I'm anticipating there will be something like that, yes. And Dave Revels can be preparing.
Upfront and maintenance. Mr. Revel, you had your hand up? Go ahead. You have to turn off, you're muted.
It doesn't show that Dave is muted with a red handle and a line through it, so it has to be something else. I don't know if Tess or someone else that's on the call from planning can help us with that.
Let me see, what's that?
Okay, you're there.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Been on computer audio, and now I'm on phone audio, so.
Yeah, phone audio.
Chair Shiffrin, you have asked that question before, and I attempted to sort of be clearer in these tables in particular. As Dr. West said, it really is a relative estimate in these upfront maintenance costs in the Tables 10-8 to 10-11 or 12 that you refer to. Right now, we have just, as of yesterday evening, gotten the cost estimates from the Coastal Engineers for all of these different strategies that you see here. Really, we started with a whole host of what was potential and feasible under the adaptation strategies. We narrowed this down from all the extensive public outreach that was led by Tiffany and others. And, you know, so we arrived at, for West Cliff, at least, all of these different sort of preferred short-term and long-term alternatives. We used sort of a relative ranking of costs and estimates. And then, as part of this cost-benefit analysis, which includes far more than just how much, what's the upfront cost and the upfront, you know, and potential maintenance cost, but many other things like ecological services, recreational value, we're starting to get into the, really, the weeds of those estimates. So, I just got the construction cost estimates and the maintenance cost estimates yesterday from our Coastal Engineers. So, some of these are, and so I would say that it ranges up to, you know, the three stars is, the three dollars is probably in the millions, the two stars is in the hundreds of thousands, and then the one is probably in the tens of thousands, if I had to provide a relative ranking today. But some of these costs surprised me a little bit. They were doing some other things, you know, I'm not an engineer, but the engineers really weighed in on getting some dollars and cents to it. So, you'll see a lot more in the cost-benefit analysis documentation coming forward. But this really was to help the community and the TAC and the department heads and the city understand what some of the trade-offs and what the relative cost may be to help us focus the more detailed analysis on adaptation strategies, both for the coast and for the transportation corps.
I think that's, I mean, I certainly think that's good. I, as you know, the office has been difficult with the pandemic. And so, it's hard for me, anyway, to stay on top of what I, you know, what I know and what I can expect. So, it wasn't totally clear whether this was what we'd already seen, or this was something new. But I hear what you're saying. I'm hoping that there'll also be definition of the effectiveness certainty in terms of what is high, medium, and low mean. Because again, I think it's important for decision-makers in the public to really have a sense of, you know, this is going to last a hundred years, this is going to last ten years, this is going to last whatever. So, I mean, I know this is all projections and estimates and not the final. But I think, to the extent it can be as quantitative as possible, it's really helpful. I then had a, trying to understand, there's so much, and I, and this isn't meant critically. It's actually, it's very impressive how much information these reports have, how comprehensive they are in terms of the various issues and concerns. But it's a little overwhelming to understand. But it's a little overwhelming of understanding where do we go from here? You know, there's gonna be a, a plan, I guess in your last slide, a proposed local coastal pro- uh, program amendment and a plan. And then there's gonna be an expectation that the city is going to be moving forward to implement this plan. And there's just so much in it. You know, the, the coast is so complicated. There are so many different zones and then spats within the zones. I mean, I think, and I, I, maybe I asked this question or I don't remember, but I'm hoping that as a plan, there'll be, uh, a list of priority projects. What are the projects that we have, I have to start looking for the money, money for? Cause there are certain parts of West Cliff that need remediation now. And hopefully the plan will be pointing in that direction as it gives an overall strategy for the longer term.
Yeah, ab- absolutely, Chair Shiffrin. There will certainly be a prioritized set of projects. And in fact, it's very likely that the Public Works Plan will be approved for those priority projects that are in short and medium term because we recognize that this plan for West Cliff Tribe is probably going to be revised, you know, every ten, twenty years and things could change. And so that's also gonna help us with that, uh, the permitting that needs to be closed out on the, the thing we're about to, um, and then in terms of funding, that is also part of the scope of these projects is to, um, identify to the extent possible funding stream that we can take for these, um, projects. And I'm already working on grant proposals to get some of that funding, um, in particular for the monitoring program that will need to be put in place, um, in order to monitor those triggers and thresholds.
My last, uh, question to CEQA process, um, as you mentioned, the plan has to go through CEQA, the Public Works Plan has to go through CEQA. And I've been recently, oh, welcome Commissioner Greenberg, nice, uh, that you're able to make it. I see you've joined the meeting. Great. Um, I see that, uh, um, I've recently been reviewing the, the draft EIR for the Walks and it's an interesting, uh, environmental document because it's both a programmatic EIR and a project EIR, to use the sort of CEQA terminology. So, much plan is being looked at, at a more full level. These are the kinds of things that we're gonna have to do over time. And then there are two projects, the EIR and the, the gate that, and they're being looked at in, you know. So, from what you're saying, it seems to me, and tell me if you've gotten this far from understanding it correctly, that the plan itself will be analyzed in the CEQA document as a, at the programmatic level. But the individual high priority, high, will be analyzed at the specific level so that if the, uh, the Works Plan is approved and with that kind of a CEQA document, it probably, uh, will be an EIR, then there will not, there will not be the need for any further environmental review for those priority projects. So, am I understanding kind of how that process is gonna work?
Um, not necessarily so. And I'm gonna pass it over, CEQA's not my area of expertise, although we have been having a lot of discussion about what this is gonna look like. And I'm gonna ask Catherine Donovan, um, who's on the line to share where we're at in this CEQA, in terms of what's necessary for CEQA.
Hi, Chair Shiffrin and other commissioners. Um, we are actually consulting with the Coastal Commission staff and our, uh, CEQA consultant on exactly how to, there, there are a variety of directions we could take on this. Um, and we've, we haven't come to a final determination, but we have been discussing it with them. And what you have described is, is one of the possibilities. The outcome that we would like to, to achieve is to have a document that would include, uh, the CEQA approval for the relatively near term projects. So, as Tiffany said, probably within the next ten, possibly twenty years so that we could just move forward with those projects. Um, but it all depends on exactly what level of detail we get. Um, because some of these will, will have more detail on exactly what we're gonna do than with others. Um, so the, so the exact, uh, proc- CEQA process hasn't been determined yet, but we're, we're working with, um, the Coastal Commission and with our environmental consultant to determine. But you have, you know, what you've described is something that we have definitely been considering.
Well, I think the point you make is a really good one because, um, the ability to do a, you know, a, a project level analysis means you gotta know which project really is. So, to the extent that some of these short term or priority projects are well defined, then I think it's possible as part of the CEQA document to really do a detailed analysis of them. Um, I think in the end, since, uh, my sense from just reading the document, that many of these are not that well defined yet. Um, it may not be possible to do that many of them with, within some realistic budget at this time, um, because there might be a great deal of design work that would have to be done before you could really understand what the environmental impacts might be. So, I think it is gonna come down to how far along is the city in identifying the specifics of the project because that's what needs to, I mean, it's, in the programmatic, you can talk about it in general and with the understanding that this is what you know now. These are the impacts you can look at now, but it, as you go forward, it's going to, before you can build a project, you're gonna have to really look at the, um, you know, it, have a lot more information about the potential impact. So, um, it's gonna, it's, because there's so much in this, um, that it's going to be a, yeah, and I, and I get this from what Donovan is saying. It's going to be a complex job to really define a good project description for the, um, for the plan. And it may well be that mu- much of it, um, will have to be done at the programmatic level in order to, um, not be, and, and, and not be, it will not be possible to really not have to do some of the kind of work. So, it's, it's a real challenge cause there, the situation is so complex. So, um, I feel, uh, um, it seems to be moving from my perspective in the right direction, so.
And we will be back in, uh, the early fall, late summer, I think September-ish, um, and so we will, we will know by then. Um, and we will report back to you as well.
Before the commission and the council can make a final decision on the plan, there'll have to be a CEQA document. So, that's another consideration to the extent that you wanna move forward and get the plan approved. Um, it may be necessary to be dealing with things at a more programmatic level. Um, otherwise, you could end up taking the next couple of years designing some of these projects. Okay, um, Commissioner Greenberg, I don't know if, I don't, I wasn't, I'm not sure when you, uh, were able to join us and I wanted to give the chance to ask any questions you might have. Uh, you're muted right now, so if you wanna say anything, you have to take the mute off.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I don't have any questions right now.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, and I'm sorry that I was, I was late, having some technical difficulties getting, getting on, but nice to be with you and thanks for the presentation.
Of course. All right, well, very good. Thank you very much then commissioners, if there is nothing else. And thank you to our consultants for being, uh, on this call also. Um, they've been doing some, some very good work for us, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, um, we now will move forward with item number two, the approval of the minutes of April sixteenth. These were continued the last meeting based on some questions about, um, how, um, about them. Are there any further questions about the minutes of April, from April sixteenth? And if not, would someone, uh, like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April sixteenth.
Is there a second?
I can.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Oh, no, we better do a roll, sorry. Uh, let's have a roll call vote.
Commissioner, can you hear me? Sorry.
Yep, yes.
I'm unmuted, okay, sorry. Um, Commissioner Conway, Nielsen.
Aye.
Spellman.
I need to abstain from this one.
Dawson. Commissioner Dawson. I think we lost her. I don't see her on the roster. Um, let's see. No, there she is. Let me unmute her. Commissioner Dawson, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
I can.
We're, yep, April sixteen.
Yes, uh, yes, I vote aye and I, I dropped off the video, but I'm still on the phone. So, uh, I'm here, but you can't see me.
Okay.
I'm, I'm working on getting back on.
Um, Greenberg.
Aye.
Maxwell. Chair Shiffrin.
Aye, and I wanna thank staff for their work on, little problematic procedurally and I appreciate the staff following through on it. So, let's move to minutes of June fourth. Are there any comments on, on those? Not? Would somebody like to move approval of the minutes of June fourth?
I'll move approval of the minutes from June four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Conway, Nielsen.
Aye.
Spellman.
Aye.
Dawson.
Aye.
Greenberg.
Aye.
Maxwell. Shiffrin.
Aye. Okay, we'll now move to item number four, public hearings, R one. Have a staff report, please.
Hi, uh, good evening everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, hi, Samantha Hatcher with the Planning Department. Um, so, I just wanted to preface this item with, um, this was intended to be on the consent agenda. Um, these types of flow variances usually come before you on the consent agenda. Um, this is an improvement in the rear yard. Um, we received no public comment. And, um, so in our opinion, it's pretty straightforward. Um, we do have a presentation prepared if you wanna hear it, but, um, like I said, it seems like it's pretty straightforward.
Is there anybody in, uh, who's called in from the public?
Um, hold on a second. There is a member of the public, but they haven't raised their hand.
Okay, um, is there a mem- uh, is there anybody on the commission who would like to hear a, uh, a more detailed staff presentation? Would the member of the public, uh, or whoever's here from the public like to hear a more detailed staff presentation? Hearing nothing and seeing none, um, I'm gonna close the public hearing and bring it back before the commission, uh, for discussion and action. Do any commissioners have any, uh, discussion on item?
I just, uh.
Yes, uh, Commissioner Spellman.
Yeah, I just had one, one question. It's really having to do with the pool equipment, right? So, the equipment is being proposed on the, let's call it the north, north or the west side of the house, which seems to be the side that's closest to the neighbor next door. I don't know that this is an issue and there is a condition, uh, in the, uh, conditions of approval that it will somehow be mitigated to temper the, the sound of, of that equipment. I'm just wondering, one, has that been, what, what do we do typically in those scenarios, right? How do we protect the neighbor that, you know, may not be aware of a project going in and, and it's there kind of thing? Is that a sufficient, uh, condition of approval in your opinion?
Hi, this is Lane Zorch, associate planner with the city. I'm the planner working on the project. Um, so we do have, um, regulations in our code regarding pool equipment, that the pool equipment has to be, uh, covered and behind, uh, the fence line so that it's not open to the public and that it has to have some sort of cover around it so, to minimize the sound. So, that will be reviewed upon the building permit and it will be checked off before the, uh, final approval is written off for the building permit stage.
Okay, so there's no real check of, you know, how much sound is actually being generated or control of that? It's more of an aesthetic, let's fence it off and put a lid on it kind of scenario?
The, the pool equipment is pretty far back from the side property line. Um, it is, um, they are very large lots and it is, probably looks to be a closer distance to the side property than it actually is. Um, I don't think outside of our, our normal review process for pools that this would cause any additional noise other than what normal noise would be associated with properties.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Nielsen.
I, I just have a follow up question to the, about the pool equipment. What is the, uh, what's the side yard setback, um, within the zone? And does that, um, does the equipment shed, um, project into that setback?
Um, I believe it's seven feet for the side yard setback for the R one seven zone district. Um, I would need to double check whether or not it, um, goes into the side yard setback, although I do think it is allowed to be in that area because it is just equipment and it's not a structure.
Okay, okay. Any other questions from commissioners?
Chair Shiffrin. I do see that the, um, the member of the public has their hand raised. I don't know if you wanna address them or not.
Um, given the complexity of Zoom, I will hear from the, I will reopen the public hearing and hear from the member of the public. You state your name and you, um, provide us your testimony. Thank you for being here.
Oh, hello. My name is, um, Megan Bishop. I'm the landscape architect on the, on the project. Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, okay, great. Yeah, I just, I, I had just wanted to, um, answer the question about the pool equipment. And, um, on projects like this before, before, um, the pool equipment, uh, is always, um, the product is always, uh, given to the planner, the planning department and the building department. Um, and it's rated, uh, decibel rating, uh, there's a, usually a minimum, uh, excuse me, a maximum decibel rating on the pool equipment and it always has to fall below that. So, um, just to ensure that the sound is, is kept, uh, pretty quiet. Just wanted to add that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Close the hearing again and any further commission, commissioner questions? Somebody like to make a motion on this, um, item to approve the staff recommendation?
I move to approve the staff recommendation.
I'll, I'll second.
Hold second. Um, okay, um, Commissioner Spellman made the motion to approve. I think I heard Commissioner Dawson before I heard Commissioner Nielsen. So, I'll say Commissioner Dawson seconded the motion. Is there any discussion on the motion? We have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Conway, Nielsen.
Aye.
Spellman.
Aye.
Dawson.
Aye.
Greenberg.
Aye.
Maxwell. Chair Shiffrin.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, let's move on to information items. Are there any information items tonight? Um, this is a question for staff, I think.
Samantha.
Normally.
Sorry, I was trying to, to get my mute.
Sorry, I was trying to, to get my mute. Um, no, I have no informational items.
Okay, thank you very much.
I, I'm sorry.
Uh, Commissioner Greenberg?
Am I, is this where I should do an update on the housing subcommittee?
Well, uh, the next item is subcommittee advisory body oral reports, and that's it.
That's what I thought, okay.
Give her your report. Go ahead.
All right. Um, so just quickly, um, we met, uh, earlier this week, and it was, uh, Ju- Julie and I and the staff from the Economic Development Agency and, um, including Jessica Melor, uh, and, uh, Lee was not able to be there, Lee Butler. Um, and we, uh, one of the things we talked about was the mandate for the planning, for the housing subcommittee, and the fact that we had, we started our work, uh, in, I'm gonna give the, uh, the dates here, we started our work, uh, really in around, um, December, and then got, you know, working in January, and then, um, beginning in March, once COVID hit, we're not really able to work. And so we, uh, feel the need to extend the work of the housing subcommittee. And I'm wondering what the procedure would be, uh, because we lost a couple of months of our six month mandate. Do we need to take a vote on that? Is that something that we can, um, you know, that we can, that we can just sort of undertake? Is there any kind of procedural issue here?
As I understand it, and staff can correct me, um, the six month mandate is related to the Brown Act. And that, under the Brown Act, if you have a committee that extends for more than six months, um, it's considered a public committee, and it has to meet all the notice requirements, it can no longer meet in private. So what this has done is that committees end, and then they have to be reestablished, reestablish a similar committee for another six months. But that would have to be, as I understand it, on, the subcommittee itself can't do that, that would have to be done by the, uh, by the full commission. So if that's a recommendation from your subcommittee, I think every staff can check with the city attorney to see if my understanding is correct, and maybe we can have this as a regular agenda item on our next meeting so that we can discuss it. Samantha, did you add anything here?
Um, yeah, I would, I would have to research that section to see if that's accurate, but, um, yeah, we can, we can check with the city attorney on that if you like.
Okay. Because one of the things we talked about is that we had on our agenda really to address the inclusionary ordinance, the new inclusionary ordinance of twenty percent, um, affordability, and how that, uh, interacted with, for instance, Section eight, um, and other, other kinds of affordable housing development that, um, we're trying to expand in the city. And so we fine tuned the, uh, the section, the, excuse me, the inclusionary ordinance, um, in terms of different kind of thresholds within it, and we wanted to then get more feedback on the new fine tuning, um, so that's one, one thing. Another thing is that we wanted to move on to talking about workforce housing, um, as a major agenda item, and we really have only just begun discussing that, and that was really what we were going to begin doing, uh, when, when COVID hit. Uh, and that also may involve some interface, for instance, with the school district. Um, we're interested in looking, for instance, at a case study project that the school, the school board is interested in, um, for workforce housing, and also studying other approaches to workforce housing in other cities. Um, and related to that is a question of the idea of diversity of housing types and how that might be kind of built in also to the workforce housing effort, um, and questions of how that's possible within our, um, our land use and zoning codes. So, um, we are, you know, really rearing to go, but do need some more time. And so it would be great if that were possible, and I guess at the next meeting, we can find out, um, how that, how that might work out in terms of, you know, our authority to continue our work and our work.
Okay, so that kind of relates to the next item, which is items referred to future agendas, because I think, um, important to get a report on the status of the subcommittee. If the subcommittee by that time has any rec- specific recommendations, um, if, if those could be brought forward at the same time, there may be a separate agenda item, uh, in terms of the commission taking action on them, because I think the commission's gonna have to take action on the status of the subcommittee. If, if the subcommittee has any recommendations, the commission can take action on those or not.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, I think it, it is inappropriate tonight to get into that, uh, into the subs-
Right.
Because it's really not on the agenda, but I think you've, you know, you've stated the problem, I think, um, unless staff comes up with a different, uh, understanding of how it, the system works, um, it should be on the next agenda for consideration.
And I think, and the next meeting is going to be in August, is that right? Or do we have one in July?
Um, yeah, that's the, the next meeting is July sixteenth.
Okay, July sixteenth, all right, good. So then we-
So that gives you a good deal of time to work.
I'm sorry?
Gives you a good deal of time for the subcommittee to work.
Yes, no, we definitely, we are going to have recommendations, I believe, at least on the inclusionary ordinance by July, um, for, for people to review.
Great. Any other, well, you've got the subcommittee report as part of our presentation tonight. I haven't, the task force for the Resilient Santa Cruz really hasn't met for quite a while. Um, I don't have really anything in addition to report. Does anybody else? I, I don't think we have any other committees or subcommittees. All right. Any other items for future agendas? Well, seeing, hearing nothing, um, we're adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Okay. Thank you.
And I guess, bye everyone.
Bye everyone.